And welcome to the August 23rd, 2022 meeting of the Stowe Select Board. This evening, we have our four Select Board members, Miss Hagaman, Miss Fresha, myself, and Miss Sturgis in the room, along with our Town Administrator Denise Tomkosky. And just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. All right. Does anyone have any public comment this evening for items that are not on the agenda?
You have a hand raised.
Yeah. All right, and just a quick reminder that public comment, we're just keeping to two minutes. And Dorothy?
Good evening. I had a concern or want a clarification at some point, hopefully regarding-
Dorothy, hang on one second.
Taking the position as maybe off hands, or I couldn't exactly how they put it, but for the issues at 92 Grapevine Road, at the Great Road. The town council at one of the meetings for the Select Board over the winter stated that they were doing, oh, an off-hand approach. And I watched the oral arguments when the town first didn't show up for that. And it confused the judges, and it confuses me too, because there were issues regarding bylaws that aren't being followed. So it leaves me wondering how residents can feel that the bylaws will be enforced if the town just, no, off-hand, because the bylaws aren't being enforced there. And a lot of issues with that. I still would like an explanation as to just how the Select Board was able to decide to make the decisions of pre-existing use in regards to change or increase of use when they gave out the licenses for that new property of the new business there, the car sales business. I know that I wasn't told that before, but I don't understand how the Select Board would not want to just say, oh, it's this law or that law, just an explanation, because it doesn't seem to follow the bylaws that they made that decision. But what was worse was that honestly, the guidelines that the zoning board appeals, who it says in the bylaws, are to make the decision on the change in use. None of those guidelines were followed.
Hey, Dorothy? Sorry, we hate your two, yeah, we hate your two minutes. We'll take, we'll take it into, we'll take it into advisement, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anybody else have any other public comment? Nope?
I think-
Oh, sorry.
Linda Hathaway.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind all our viewers and the residents of town that the deadline to register to vote or change party affiliation is this Saturday. The office is going to be open nine to five. We are also starting in-person early voting. So you can come to the town building, we'll be downstairs in the former COA space where we've been voting in 2020, that's the same place we did early voting. And so we are nine to three on Saturday, and then eight-thirty to four Monday through Friday next week. And then if, we can still do vote by mail if people get their applications in. The deadline to apply for a vote by mail ballot is August 29th. And I want to remind everybody who sends in a voter, vote by mail application, if you're registered, no party, unenrolled, independent, and you select all elections, but don't select primary, we're going to be sending a note to follow up, asking you, which party ballot do you want, or do you not wish to vote in the primary? Because to me, elections, all elections means everything. So, and you can check your voter status, you can track your ballots all online. We have links on our webpage, on the town clerk's page, and then there's a town meeting and election page. And a lot of our links connect right to the Secretary of State's office. And they, they're great, it's great help to see. And I just want to remind you, state ballots are coming in this, looks like this. Town ballots, clearly marked town, in an envelope. And you have to put postage back on the ballot envelope that comes back, because the town is not paying for a postage paid return, but the state is. So there's a difference, kind of pay attention. And we have our wonderful Dropbox out front, you can certainly do that. And I will tell you that all the applications that we have received today, and that I've had party information to send a primary ballot, we've sent out 1,253 ballots. And everything is out the door. The town ballots are roughly running the same. And I do have a, no, all of those applications are gone too. And all the town primary ballots that we have, the primary ballots that we received back, information is entered in to the computer, so you should be able to see that it's there. And the town ones, I probably have about 50 that will enter in tomorrow. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nobody else has their hands raised?
Nope.
Okay, any board member comments?
Anyone from the other groups?
No question? None? Anything I want to talk about, I will talk about later, and-
Do you have a quick recognition?
Sure.
I did realize it's not listed as recognition on the-
Um, I think it's folding into board member comments, sure.
I just, I wanted to shout out to Warm Hearts of Stowe, delivered some 50-plus backpacks to families this past week that, for preparation for school, which I just think it's one of those quiet groups that not everybody hears about, and they've been doing it for years. Louise Peacock is like a little treasure of Stowe, she's been doing it forever. So, thanks to her and her team for getting that done and taking care of some of the kids that will have things just like everybody else when school starts.
Excellent, thank you. All right, Denise, take it away.
I just have two very quick things, since I was not here last week. As of August 18th, we have eight positive COVID cases in town, or 3.65 positivity rate, which is still well below the state and county average, which are both over 7%. So, we seem to be doing well in town. And then, just for the board, just to throw this out there, I sent an email today to the three chairs of this board, Finance Committee and Capital Planning, looking at Tuesday, September 20th, for the joint boards' meeting on the town hall. So, if you can all save that date, if that works. And we are looking to hold it in the town hall, so people can actually see the building, walk around, and have a discussion. I will be providing a Zoom link for those who are not comfortable meeting in person, or unavailable to meet in person. Erica confirmed that she's available, Steve has confirmed that he's available, they're both speaking to their respective committees. I did meet with Doug today. While it won't be a joint boards' committee with the town hall restoration committee, they're obviously welcome to attend. And I will have, if the group wishes to discuss it, the last piece that Don Mills was working on was different options of sort of soup to nuts on what can be done there. So there are some discussion items for that evening. So we should have that for that night as well. Once I hear back from the other two, that a majority of board members can attend, if anyone here has a conflict that they know they cannot make, and would like to, let me know, but then I will finalize this and send everything out.
Great.
It's at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Has the CPC been invited?
So, they haven't, because quite frankly, to me, they're just the funding mechanism. I think, I think the three financial boards need to talk about whether or not we want to do something first. There are several other layers, because then it would be the, what do we do? How do we do it? At that point, we can talk about fundraising, CPC. Again, it's a public meeting, so they're welcome to attend, but the intention, in my opinion, was never to include them at this initial meeting, because they're not the decision-makers on whether or not we keep, do something, restore it, or whatnot.
I understand that, I just think that they've been through a lot, and they recommended that a joint boards' meeting be held. So, if I can go, I can represent them, and I'll let them know that that's the case.
And that's it?
That's all?
That's it.
All right. We are going to move on for the permit for the Stowe Firefighters Association Touch a Truck event on Saturday, August 27th. Someone here, oh, there's Eric. Hello?
That's finally going to get on.
How are you doing?
Not too bad.
Excellent.
The rain is a nice, nice touch for tonight.
Absolutely. So do you want to give us a quick overview of what's going on, where you're holding it this year, all of that stuff?
Sure. So, we ran two couple speed bumps, but we finally, or we got some stuff finalized. So our touch truck this year is going to be in the parking lot of Bose. After learning from last year, the overwhelming number of tenants, right off the bat, we realized that we needed a bigger place. And the biggest place we could find that made it relatively easy was going to be Bose. Using Bose, we have the traffic light down at Great Road, it's set enough, it's set enough off the road, we shouldn't have any people, or pedestrians walking on the roadway, and there's a large enough parking lot. So this year, it's going to be August 27th, this upcoming Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00 again. We've reached out to a handful of groups and businesses. We should have a good showing this year. All the fire apparatus is going to be there, along with ETL again, Boston Med Flight's going to bring an ambulance. We have a drone and a motorcycle, potentially coming from the Subway Police, if, as long as it's available. One of our firefighters has contacts with the state police. So at one time during the day, we're going to have a state police helicopter coming and land, so people can look at it, a state police K-9, along with the UMass Life Flight helicopter, which came last year.
Wow. That's amazing. And I see you've got some food, that looks like it's, you've got the appropriate permits and everything, so you'll have some food and some entertainment, or?
The trucks are the entertainment.
The trucks are the entertainment, yep. I just hope there's anything else. All right, does anybody have any questions? Or Eric, sounds like fun. No? Yes, we have a little friend who attended last year and said it was the best day of his life, so he's very excited to come and come again this weekend, hopefully. So, thank you all for putting this on, I think it's fantastic. With that, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a permit for the Stowe Firefighters Association Touch a Truck event to be held Saturday, August 27th, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at 688 Great Road.
Second. Any further discussion? Nope, seeing none, all in favor? Aye, and that is unanimous. Congratulations, we look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Awesome.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. All right. So, the next item is, it, when was it, on Thursday? I received an email that the Board of Health was going to be, maybe it was Wednesday, I don't know. Last week, I received an email that the Board of Health is going to be meeting on August 18th about the Level 3 critical drought and non-essential outdoor water use. So I sort of attended just so that we could have an idea of what they would end up passing. So they have passed a non-essential outdoor water use ban, which is included in the packet. Basically, all of the information is on the website as to what the ban, the temporary ban entails. It is, the Word of Health is the one who voted on it. I sort of, you know, it is their purview, I feel, so that basically was it. I just wanted to make sure that if anybody happened to have any questions, that we had a place on the agenda for it. But really, it was just for me to, to say that I went to the meeting and I haven't, yes.
I just had a question that came from basically asking about enforcement.
Right, so-
It's not like we have a Board of Health, please.
So, the idea is that if people have, I don't know, if people see someone doing it, they should reach out to the Board of Health. If they see someone watering their lawn, basically, or washing their cars, or whatever. The police are not going to be enforcing it, that is not, I mean, Chief, it's very clear that that isn't, the police are not enforcing it.
We actually set up our, if people do call the police station, we, through our new phone system, we actually have an option now, if you're reporting a water ban violation, and then it goes right to the Board of Health, or it goes right to the Board of Health. That's, I, I talked to Cindy, and we set that up together, and that's how they wanted to handle it.
Yep.
So, yeah, we're not going to be, we don't have any enforcement power on that, or authority on that.
Hopefully, it will keep raining and keep raining and keep raining, we can get out of this drought, but I do think that, you know, that's, that's where we're at right now. So any questions, just go to the Board of Health.
It's a great move, you know, it's one of those things, we act like our wills are limitless, and they're really not. And so, hopefully, people are reading up on that information, because it's out there.
Yes. Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Did they say, did the Board of Health say when they were revisiting this?
So, that is a great question that I also had after the meeting, and have not asked them back. I think that it was, it says in the ban that they'll monitor the drought level and review the ban from time to time, so my guess is we'll get to a point where they feel, I think when the state lifts the critical drought thing, that's probably when they would revisit it, but certainly, I would ask the Board of Health, because I don't know the actual answer.
No, I will, I just didn't know if they mentioned it there, because I, you know, those are the questions we're getting, so-
Absolutely, absolutely.
I will follow up with Mary.
Yes. All right, so, that's all I had on that. All right, so the next bit is going to be the discussion of the charge for the Economic Development and Industrial Commission. The piece that is in the packet is the, kind of what the planning board had presented to, what Lori had presented at that joint meeting, just so that we had something to, basically so that we had a framework to work from, so that we weren't kind of coming up with something from scratch. So, and then obviously, the current charge, or the mission statement, is on the website right now for them. So, I think, I think I wanted to sort of go into this polling everyone on the board, and seeing kind of what you all feel is an important charge for them. I think it's going to be key for this, for that committee moving forward, to have something to be able to work on, right? So it's not just this general kind of overview of, here, support the, support the businesses, to, for them to, for any committee, right, to have something tangible, I think is important. So, I just wanted to poll everyone, and to, would you like to start?
Well, to our last meeting, they were also going to review it in this part.
Yes, and I've not received anything back from them, so I think-
I think they're meeting on Thursday this week.
Right, so we, we could do one of two things. Since it's on the agenda, I think I'd like to have just some, because we have time to talk about it now, just a little bit of input from all of us, then we can take what they do, and then we're going to, I mean, this isn't going to get fleshed out tonight, because I think we, we need their input as well. But I do think that I want to kind of have a general idea of where people are coming from. Does anyone want to start? I don't want to put you on the spot, I just happened to turn to the right.
I can't tell rights or lefts, so.
My right.
It's my right, I'm joking, anyway. So I, without putting words in their mouth, I think, well, two things. When Lori put this together, when the planning board put this together, it was not as a mandate, it was a discussion, right? And then secondly, I think there was some concern on the part of the board that developing a community engagement strategy, gain community data, information perspectives, yada, 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 that it might have been a little overwhelming for them.
Fair.
I did like the idea that there, that there's a coordination with the boards and committees in, in Lower Village, or I guess any economic piece, especially Lower Village, there's so many layered issues there, that having information from the Board of Health, from the Conservation Commission, from the planning board is all important. I also think there should be planning board input on the very real fact, oh no, I shouldn't say fact, very real potential, that that plaza is going to go through major changes. You know, I don't know how long Shaw's can operate there with 20 people in the store at a time.
Right.
And I think we need to be looking at other zoning that could accommodate other uses. So, I, I like the idea of coordination with the boards, I think it makes a stronger committee, but I also want to hear from them, as to how much they want to do on that. So.
Okay. Cool.
I think I agree with what Ingeborg's saying, I also, I kind of felt like this is a really nice, meaty project. I mean, you know, this is something to do for a while, because there's a lot here. And, you know, I'd like to hear also whether it seems overwhelming, because it's, I mean, there's, like, like, if the EDIC takes this on, the outcome will be that we'll have a really nice piece of our comprehensive plan, crafted by a group that, that is sort of chosen in a, in a different way than, than all the other boards and committees, that's nice in-between place. So, I think that's kind of interesting. I think, you know, some of this could be separable, obviously, and that would be, that would also still be a pretty good charge, so I kind of, and I feel as though this is a timely thing, but, but once it was done, then maybe there would be another opportunity to see what else, I mean, this doesn't specifically tackle the water problem, which is always sort of, I don't know if it's the unspoken thing that we, we need to talk about, or, or if it's just part of it, you know? So, those are kind of my comments on that.
And then, oh, I agree with all this. I think my, my biggest concern sort of was, and it came up, well, in, in one of the early sort of key points is around the communication issue, like, that, that's been the problem, that they weren't clear who they reported to. I'm not sure that, that we or the planning board knew who they reported to.
Right.
So, like, and especially if they're going to develop this plan, which is a pretty big difference from what their current charge is. Like, then where does it go? Does it go to planning board, or does it go to us? Because if it's sort of part of the master plan, I might use that term loosely, then it's really planning board, right? But if it's, so, but, so anyway, that's, I think that's just a piece that, again, you know, hearing from them, that, where their interest is on that piece of the, of this, the planning board's ideas, and then being really clear before we finish this process, like, okay, and they report to.
No, I-
Definitively, right. And, well, there was one other thing, oh, and I was just looking again at the, the charge that they've had, which, I'm not sure it came up quite as much, I mean, I think the clarification that they're working with the different boards is really important, but it also talked about acting as a liaison with business interests, and sort of, I think that needs to be flushed out more, like, what does that look like? And, and, you know, I mean, I, you know, there's some really good stuff, it's very different from what the planning board's talking about, but in terms of, you know, helping, getting feedback, because it says welcoming new businesses by streamlining the understanding of local regulations. Well, maybe they should be more vocal on, you know, to the Select Board or the Planning Board on what they think needs to change or be added to local, or, you know, whatever, on local regulations. But, so I think that some of the, the work that's in that original charge is good basis, but it's just not flushed out enough to make it clear to everyone, really.
Right.
Who does what.
There's, and I think, sorry, you all, sorry. I think, having been on the Lower Village Revitalization Subcommittee, one of the things that we came up with was this, like, big report at the end of it, right? And it was this, it was fantastic, and it would be nice to have kind of an economic-based one that comes out of it as well. And I know that, you know, we were able to get some grants for, for different studies that were done. I mean, so it was, it was a more, it was a meatier kind of project that really then did, you know, it's part of the master plan. I think, well, it's information for the master plan, whether or not it's in the master plan at this point, was the question. And yeah, I do think the liaison thing, that can be tricky, right? So you, you've got a, I think that, you know, as it moves forward, we need to be very clear on what the liaison role looks like, like, is it, you're having meetings with people? Are you, you know, I don't want them promising things to business owners, that, like, we're not clear with what our regulations are in the town. And so I think it's just really, I think the most important thing, and in order for this committee to be a successful committee moving forward, is that the communication is, is just really clear on sort of what their boundaries are, and what their benchmarks are, that we're trying to have them meet, and all of that stuff. But, having said all of that, I don't know that we're ready to write a charge from them yet.
No, I think we need to, I think we need to have that-
Oh, sorry.
No, so I just wanted to remind you, so the discussion at the last meeting was that you would have your conversations, that you had talking points.
Okay.
They were going to have a conversation, they were going to have their talking points, and then Lori's already had hers, so that you, Lori and Tom were going to meet-
That's right.
And bring the ideas of the three committees together.
So, that's right.
So, I do think, I mean, I just took notes of what you all sort of said.
Okay.
But I think if you come up with some key points that you will bring to represent the board's thoughts, that's really what you want to come out of this, so that you can then meet, after they all meet, and sort of flush out a charge, then go back to the boards and-
Got it.
Review a draft charge.
So I think what I'm hearing is, we want to clarify their, their role as a liaison, I think that's something that needs to be absolutely ironed out.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I just feel that it's, that's too squishy at the moment, it's just too-
The liaison role, oh yeah, for sure, for sure.
No, right.
Agreed. And then, I think, yeah.
So, my, my feeling is the biggest issue is the one that Ellen brought up. You need to figure out who the committee reports to.
Well, no, absolutely.
So, if they're doing information, are they coming, you, technically, you all appoint the committee. So, in theory, they would report to you.
Right.
But if they're coming to you about changes in bylaws, that doesn't affect you. So, I, I think you need to really figure out what the committee is going to do, and then if it is going to be representing businesses on bylaw changes, or working to figure out how to streamline the process for new business, it may be more relevant to have them work, be appointed by the planning board, and be a subcommittee of the planning board, versus this board.
Right, which, I have sort of always felt like that board belongs under the planning board, just because I don't know what, I mean, it's important for us to have that information, but, you know, we don't do the zoning bylaws, like, we're not hashing all of that stuff out. And so, I do think that, I don't know.
But I think a lot of this, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
No, you do.
I'll wait my turn.
Okay, yep.
Well, I, I mean, I think that, that the part of it that makes sense here is that it's, some of the business regulation things, which we really do, we're the ones who make those decisions, we don't do zoning changes, but, but, you know, like, the licenses and the, you know-
I see.
Sign, whether, signed bylaw is not, maybe not a great example, but, you know, I mean, those kind of, so I, I can see where that, that makes sense, it's, but it does become like, well, where's the balance of, and maybe even where's the focus, because if, again, sort of to their, like, what do they say, because there's a lot here.
Right.
That's a big job.
Right.
And then there's the job they, they thought they had before, or whatever, you know, so.
Hang on one quick second, I just have a clarification. We can't have a joint boards' appointment, like, a joint-
No, but you could have a charge, so, I mean, the charge could still be, report to the planning board, and be appointed by this board, and they could come in and give you updates. But you could have them provide their reports to the planning board.
Okay.
I mean, it could be however the charge is, but, I mean, they technically, I mean, they're a volunteer committee, they don't technically report to people, but they need to know what to do with information.
Right.
So if they're gathering it, where do they go with it?
Right.
And, and I guess, maybe that's a conversation to have with the three chairs, to say, you know, you know, Tom would be a great person to say, well, what do you think you should be doing with the information?
Right, right.
You know, and you see the benefit.
Right.
You know, if they're going to be a liaison to businesses with regards to, like, a signed bylaw, well, obviously, then they would represent the business interests to the planning board.
Right.
As they're talking about bylaw changes. But if they're talking about a Class 2 Auto license issue, then yes, they would come here.
Right.
So, I think back to Ingeborg's initial point, they should be working with, coordinating with all boards and committees, that if there's a conservation issue that's affecting-
Right.
Part of the business district- Part of the business district, then maybe they can help to. Uh, relay information in layman's terms to the businesses on what the conservation issues are, or whatever. So that it wouldn't be a specific board and that they, part of their charge is, they may have to go and and coordinate with multiple boards based on. Whatever topic they're representing or working on.
Okay.
That was exactly my point. That we can't, if you have them report to one board.
Right.
Then there's, if their scope is really that narrow and they're just looking at zoning issues or something.
Right. Right. Right.
Then that might be fine. But if there's gonna be a lot of issues, I I don't know. I'm anticipating that they'll wanna discuss a lot of issues that affect business in the town. Maybe not just there, but in other little clusters, or maybe new little clusters, right? So part of it is definitely planning, but part of it is all the other, and so being, reporting to the select board.
Then it can kind of.
Gives them a broader scope, should they want that.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Should we want that from them?
Mm-hmm.
Personally, I think so.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that could be one of your points that you bring to them.
Okay. Yep.
And see, see what the scope is. I just think they have more flexibility if they work with a board that has. Uh, broader oversight or.
Yep.
Whatever. I don't know if oversight is the right word, but you you expressed it very well.
Right. I mean, cause now we have green advisory, they may wanna work with the green advisory committee on, you know, green initiatives and.
Right. Right, we're, right, 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 right.
Oh, my God. There's so many thoughts I have about what you could do over there that, oh, my gosh, yes, exactly.
We can talk.
We can talk. What a place that gets nothing but sun. Hmm, only one cow we possibly do with all that sun.
Um, yes, okay.
Record. Talk about record. I'm sorry.
Very formidable.
One more side, just the term liaison, I actually think of it almost more as advocate, because liaison is a loaded term.
Yes, yes.
Cause I think that what I, you know, when I first heard the term EDIC, it's like, oh, they're advocates for our businesses.
Yep.
And so I think maybe thinking of more different, you know, more differently, that's great. Um, you know, but. More that they're, they're gonna take feedback from different businesses and advocate, you know, to whatever board they think, you know, cause. Cause the idea would be that as the group that's been thinking about it more, they'll, they'll hear from a business that has an issue, and they'll say, we've never heard this before, or we hear this every year, and then we'll take it to whichever board seems like the right place to go.
Yep.
To discuss it more or something, so.
I think advocates allows for businesses to know. That they have someone to go to in the town, that, and I think that that's what we really want, right? We want. The businesses to feel like they can have a relationship with the town that's not adversary, like, and we want to make sure that there are volunteers who are willing to shepherd that through, so.
Right. Sort of have this thought. I don't know if it's misplaced, but I sort of have this feeling that, um. Since there was a little trouble with, um, some very strong advocacy in the past. Um.
I'm behind you on this one.
I just wanna consider.
And that's why I gave it a hard life, I'm lucky. Is that not the right word then?
I just wanna consider how. If there's any way to to encourage. Um, yet again, to encourage cordiality, to just, um, you know, encourage that that advocacy is a way of. Um, being a representative in a, um, it's like a mediator.
Hmm.
Okay, so it's, it's a cool-headed person who comes in and says, you know, I heard from so-and-so the other day, and they have a grave concern about X, Y, Z. But it's all done nicely with a necktie on, keeping the head separate from the heart, and not sort of, um. Um, making anybody else feel like they're wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's not the point. The point is to work out a solution.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm. I don't understand what you said about liaison being a loaded word, but that's irrelevant. Maybe we can call it advancement instead of advocacy. I think advocacy has. That's a word that's loaded to me.
Oh, okay.
So, I, we're wordsmithing here.
Yeah, but.
And the idea is the same, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think, you know, I just looked up, you know.
Or they're an intermediary. There's some, I mean, there's some, some kind of person that works between.
Something. Promotion. Whatever, but I just, let's, let's. And still the theme is to work with different boards, not to be thinking that they have their own.
Yeah, sure.
Got it?
I think so. Um, all right, so I think next steps are gonna be for me to schedule a meeting with Laurie and Tom, and then we'll sit, we'll hash out whatever, and then come up with talking points that we can present to each of our boards. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Excellent.
Great.
Uh, so there's gonna be no motion there. Um, all right, Chief Solisi. Hello, would you like to talk to us about the traffic mitigation plan?
Sure.
Can I ask you a question first? I've been corrected on how to say your name.
Mm-hmm.
And the chair just said it the way I said it, and I was corrected.
Solisi.
Uh, I was like, that's how you, when we did this, this interview for, when I was on the.
It's Solis. Um, oh, okay.
You just pronounced it for twenty years wrong.
It all comes back to who you ask in my family, because one side actually says it one way, and the other side says it another. So I just go with what my father.
Oh, okay.
That's Solisi. So, but if you go back to my grandparents, they, that was a whole discussion.
But now I know that I was.
You're right. Well, thank you very much for having me here today.
Yes.
Um. So, from the letter that I sent in, in, uh, two thousand fourteen, uh, we, actually before two thousand fourteen, the police department and fire department residents were. Um, calling us and really talking about traffic, uh, in the fall time. Traffic pretty much triples the population size of Stowe on the weekends. And so we needed to come up with a plan. It would take about two hours to get from the fire academy down through Sudbury Road Bridge, couldn't get out of their driveway. So. Uh, so in two thousand fourteen, Chief Bosworth and Fire Chief Landry came to the 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 different board, but I think, uh, uh, that, and put together a plan. So since the fall time, when we, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, uh, was formed, uh, early in May, we started discussing. Fall, because time goes by really quick. And we were starting to get, what's, what are you guys gonna do? And we said, well, this is a good opportunity to revisit that plan. The point really of the plan is, how do we keep public safety, um, available to all residents? How do we get fire trucks down to the south end of town? How do we get them to the north end of town? How do we get emergency services where they need to go? So we, uh, uh, we looked at it, we looked at this plan, and we saw some things that could be changed. Collins Foundation has its own road now, so we don't, you know, necessarily have to, um. You know, we worry about traffic, cause people still go down Barton Road, but we put some closures on the road. They they advertise out of Hudson now, so the GPS gets sent to Hudson. Uh, so. People stay out of the smaller neighborhoods. So we can take some of our plan out. Uh, we still have fire access roads, and we still have driveways that we can use. Uh, to get down to any emergency on that side of, uh, for Collins Foundation. Honey Pot is a big attraction for individuals, uh, that draws a large crowd. How do we handle that? And every year they get bigger and bigger, which is great for their, their business. Um, and we've been talking to them, and over the past few years, resident, some of the residents down there. Are asking for more. And we came up with, this year, instead of just having one officer, we're gonna have two officers down there, because there, some, uh. Some of their parking lots just need a little bit of extra help, uh, from the officers to be able to direct traffic. And there's a whole separate plan that we're gonna revisit later on. With, uh, Honey Pot and trying to get more access into their parking lots, uh, that, cause they have one access road right now, uh, off of Boone Road to get into lots B and C. If this car breaks, breaks down like it did last year twice, that's twenty minutes for them to pull a tractor all the way around, and that stops traffic. And we had it going down Boone Road, up and down Boone Road, down Gleeson Dell Road, all the way down, uh, across the bridge, down to Pine Bluffs. Stopped. So we're looking at what can we do for alternatives, such as like widening that road. Um, and we'll have to work with the proper boards and conservation and, uh, have everybody help with that, with that. So, but part of our discussion is to make sure that, uh, all the stakeholders are involved, cause that's important, right? Cause we wanna know what their, their plan is and what. Uh, what works for them and what doesn't. So we did have a meeting last week. I invited Shellburn, I invited, uh, Honey Pot, uh, Collins Foundation. Uh, all to come to the meeting. I gave them a copy of this plan. I said, here you go, this is what we're planning on doing, this is the plan, this is the change. Uh, but they ended up, nobody showed up. So they were either very happy with it, or forgot about it, just, I I don't know, but they they were given the opportunity. Uh, also, we've found over the past few years that some, um, the Christmas tree farms have been drawing a lot of people in. So we're gonna start working on, we're continuing to work on this. This is a, uh, a plan that is constantly evolving, so we're going to be looking at. Uh, mistletoe, honey pot sells trees, uh, taproot is new over on Tuttle Lane. We actually have a plan developed with them already for last year's traffic, so we just gotta incorporate that into this. So you'll see in the plan that it's in development. Uh, so we are trying to get things to take care of for what's happening in the next couple of weeks. Which is the start of our season here in Stowe. Uh, and then, but we're gonna continue to work on it as well. Uh, and the other orchards are, uh, McDerby and Carver, which they don't get a lot, like, McDerby gets a lot of roadside kind of stands. They don't get the influx that, uh, the other stands do. Uh, same thing with, like, Apple Field, they get a lot of influx, but, you know, they don't get the amount of traffic, like, thousands and thousands of people at one time. And so we're gonna be continuing to work on this plan to help, help them. I have always said to the, uh, to the orchards, like, we wanna, one, public safety is important. We wanna keep traffic flowing. We want the residents to be able to come and go freely from their homes. And the more cars that I can put in their lot, the less cars that are on the road, and the more money they're gonna be spending in your business. So, you know, it's, it's a benefit for, for everybody. So that's, uh, that's, we're coming to you on behalf of the Traffic Advisory Committee. Uh, cause they voted for me to be the representative, uh, to come here and talk, which is fine. And, uh, so we're asking for this. Updated plan, which we figured after eight years was time to to be updated. And, uh, now that we have the Traffic Advisory Committee, we can continue that.
Mm-hmm.
On an ongoing basis instead of waiting eight years. Uh, and, uh, just put this plan in front of the select board if you have any questions and want any changes. This is, you know. I'm here to answer your questions.
Excellent. Did you have a few changes you wanted to make mention of?
Yes. Changes, thank you. So I did add in, uh, that is different from your, uh, packet about. Um, Christmas tree farms were added to this, which, which originally was only on the table of contents, but it was not in the policy of special event planning. And then the other part is on Shellburn, is, um, that the patrol officers will be looking at any traffic backups, cause they necessarily. Don't have, uh, detail officers. They do, um, will hire us every once in a while, and they, and it's usually for onsite security or anti-do traffic. Um, their plan is when they get full to ship the traffic across the street, cause they have a secondary lot, but once it's full, they just put the gate up at the entrance, and they don't let anybody in, and they just keep pushing them up and down, uh. West Acton Road, so you gotta go somewhere else. So that's, um, they don't queue them up anywhere. So, but if there are, there are phases to our response, uh, and if there's certain points of traffic backup, that is when we like initiate, okay. Um, we'll shut down a road. And we've only had to do a full shutdown, I think, uh, once, which is like for around the Honey Pot area, that was. Uh, Sudbury Road we shut down, um, Boone Road we shut down, and Whitman we shut down, so no cars could come in. And that's because we, this was, traffic was going back up and over the hill on Whitman Street, and out on Gleeson Dell, we just, cars were just stopped. Uh, last year, I think I came in probably about three times on the weekends, just to help the patrol officers out, and because not only were we a detail officer, but the patrol officers were on scene. And then, and they just needed extra help to to handle the traffic in town. So we've, uh, you know, we responded that way, but this, with this new plan, we'll, we'll. Help move things along, keep it fluid. Cause as long as people are moving there, they seem to be happier, then it's just stopping.
We have a couple.
All right.
Yeah. Hey, I'm gonna start with Ellen this time, yeah.
Um, so, for some reason, and I noticed it was on the old one, too, the start of the season for Shellburn is Labor Day weekend, and the start for. Honey Pot is the third week in September.
The details.
When they've already started. Why, why such a difference? Cause it's so much more, I mean, Honey Pot's just so much busier.
So.
Already.
So when we first developed this plan, we met with, uh, their staff, who actually keeps to- totals on the amount of people that come through.
Uh-huh.
And they found that the, their peak, uh, they start slow now, but as like the third week, that's when really the peak starts, and that's when. Um, you really start seeing the amount of traffic that's coming through.
Is that still, still the case? It just seems like it. I mean, I was there two weeks ago or whatever for Blueberries, and it was packed. I mean, it wasn't parking lot packed, but it was. Way more people than I expected already.
So there'll still be a lot of people, but not to the point where it's impacting the flow of traffic.
Yeah. So you think it won't, it won't get to be, I just, I'm really concerned that you wait that long, and that means three weeks of the neighbors freaking out because there's gonna be a lot, especially Labor Day. Well, I don't know Labor Day this year, maybe not.
So, I mean, if we. Every year's different.
Yeah.
And, and I hate saying it like that, but it's like, we could have a, a, you know, COVID was a, a, an interesting year, cause people, the orchards were still open, and then so people just like flock to it.
Right.
So, it started off a lot sooner.
Yeah.
Um, and this year, it's, it's, people have been out and about before.
Yeah.
Fall time. So, you, you could be a hundred percent right. It could all of a sudden, and then we're gonna have to respond appropriately.
Okay.
Um, you know, and then maybe revisit it, but this is the, um, from the years past that we've learned about the amount of people that have come in. This is like where the really peaks are.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, and the other is actually from a, a Whitman Road resident asking that the parking, the no parking signs go up Whitman as well, because apparently people think now that it's. Now that the Christmas tree, it started, I guess, last year with the Christmas tree farms.
Yes.
Which is, that's a whole other topic you'll address later, but, um, that people were, you know, trying to park on Whitman during the apple season.
For, for apple picking?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we, we do put signs.
I just didn't see it on the list. I just wanted to make sure of something.
So actually, that was brought to my attention, too, about Whitman Street, and, uh, I think it was just written, it, it's written incorrectly. Cause it says Sudbury Road at Whitman to Gleeson Dell, on number three.
Oh, yeah.
G. So it should have been, uh, on Whitman Street from Sudbury to Gleeson Dell. So it is on there, it's just written, uh, backwards.
Okay.
And Lieutenant Thorein has been doing it for, for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
And we probably put out. Most of our, uh, inventory on signs, cause not only do we put it, uh, we have the ones that we can attach to whatever fixture that we can.
Yeah.
Uh, but we also have the independent ones that we can put up on the road. And we do Robert Road, we, you know, not all of Robert Road, cause that was just, uh, but we do like till where people can see, like, around the corners.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, up and down, uh, Whitman Street, Apple Blossom, um, down Sudbury Road, Boone Road, uh, cause we don't want people parking. Along between A, uh, the A, uh, parking lot and Sudbury Road, uh, up and down Boone Road, so as, as much as we can get, uh, all the way down. And then, again, it's gonna still be a circle one way, so you come in from Boone or Sudbury, um, and then you go into either A lot, or you go up to Boone and B and C. But when you come out of the farm store, or you come out of B C lot, you go down to Sudbury Road, uh, down Sudbury to Gleeson Dell. You do that, and that's where like, uh. Uh, a choke point actually is, is because like one car will go, and then you'll, they'll have to wait because of traffic going on sixty-two. So that second officer that we're introducing this year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, will go from, will float from the exit point and the B C entrance point, so we can keep traffic moving as much as we can.
I think it was great. I mean, having not read the old one, that, it's impressive, just the thought process is great, so. It's helpful.
I just, I'm curious, um, so if you, as, as Ellen was, um, concerned about, so if, if on an earlier weekend. Um, in sort of the middle of the day, they decide, oh, it would have been great to have a detail, is there a way to, um, I mean, staffing-wise, that must be tricky.
So, we plan for these, like, we, we posted them now, and we're assigning officers now to them. Um, on a Saturday, fall time, beautiful weather, to get somebody in. It's not the easiest thing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, especially where if we put up, it, it, it's not instantaneous, okay, I need an officer now, other than the officers that are on duty, but to bring somebody in.
Mm-hmm.
You know, calm, and calm at home, okay, I gotta get ready, let me come in. So it takes like half hour, forty-five minutes, an hour, and by that time. The problem can be cleared up.
Mm-hmm.
So it's like, what are, what are we looking at for an issue? How big is the issue going on right now? Do we have cars stopped? I can always call officers in, and they'll come in and respond. Um, but that takes time, you know, it's like with anything, it's not an instantaneous, uh, other than the officers that are on duty to call someone from home. So, we'll look at that, and if we know, like. Let's say Saturday was a really big day, and then Sunday's gonna be the same weather, like, we'll have a discussion with those, those orchards, say, hey, listen, this is what happened yesterday. We're thinking the same thing's gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
We, we're gonna put somebody out there. How are we gonna bring people in now?
Cool.
It's ever-evolving.
Yeah.
Got it.
I just had, um, one question, which I think I know the answer to, but I just wanna clarify.
Mm-hmm.
When you shut the roads down. How do residents get in and out? Are they, obviously, they can get out, cause they'll drive down the empty road and hit something.
Mm-hmm.
Hit a human, not, I don't mean hit, but. Yeah, two-way point, right?
So, you're right. So typically, when we have actually shut the road down, nobody goes down, even the residents, they have to wait. So, yes, so if we shut the road down, nobody goes. And the roads get shut down probably for about five to ten minutes, and that will clear it out. And as a police cruiser at that intersection, shutting the road down, nobody, nobody comes in that road. And that's a barricaded road with a, and actually, one of our points, our three event points. Is that the highway department. And that's a barricaded road with a, and actually one of our points, our free event points is that the Highway Department, um, will, will be going around and putting barricades uh, pre-set up uh, in strategic locations that are off the road. So if we have to put them on the road, so you'll have a barricade and a police officer in police car. And then that, that roadway has to clear.
So it's only for a short period of time?
An actual, yeah, it's only, I, I, I think the last time we did it was only like fifteen minutes.
Okay. Cause that was not clear in the document.
So I, we don't want to put an actual time on it because you don't know what's gonna happen. But if we have to, um, you know, but that's the actual physical part of it is shutting, when we shut the road down, somebody will be there.
Okay. I am a little concerned about that, but um, what I was gonna say that was positive was that I love the fact that it's a living document. So the point is that if issues come up with road shutdowns and residents are stuck, that uh, I'm, I am sure the department would be responsive to an individual's needs.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, we can always get to somebody, you know, and then like what does a shutdown really look like? Okay, so if we have cars backed up over Whitman Street, all the way past Birch Hill, coming back down. Okay, well, that's a point where we need to, we can't get a fire truck set down. So what do we do for that? Okay, well, we shut down Whitman Street. And we've shut them and we push cars down Boone Road, to, to, to Boone Road. And then that Whitman Street will clear up, cruiser will leave.
Okay. All right.
So, or if Boone Road is backed up onto Gleesondale Road. Okay, now we're gonna have to shut that down. We, that is like the extreme. We're hoping never to get to there. It's been, it's only happened once, but those are our extreme choke points. So if we turn around and we have cars that are, and that happened actually, I'm sorry. We shut down only once, but we've had the cars backed up when the car broke down onto the B C lot. That they didn't know where to go. So Gleesondale Road, like if we had cars backed up under Boone, coming down Boone, past Wood Mill Hill, then we would put, you need a car there. And then we'd push cars, not push cars, but like cars would be, have to go up to Whitman Street and then come up that way. So you try to do it strategically, like you don't do a total like that.
Yeah. No, it's a tough challenge. Um.
But in the same thing on, on, on West Acton Road. I mean, if we have cars that are, you know, coming out of Shelburne and all the way down West Acton Road, you know, what do we do with that? Well, let's try to prevent cars from going up West Acton Road. Let's clear that out for at least, you know, five, ten minutes. And then that way we can still get traffic through. Because if you have cars in both directions and then people trying to cross there, we started putting no parking signs going from South Acton all the way up to the entrance point. Because there were people parking on both sides of West Acton Road all the way up. It's, I, I, uh, like past Amer Scott, that you go, like it's nice and wide, so people start hard all the way up that way. And um, so, you know, we had to start putting no parking signs up that way too. So it's, you know, we're trying to do the best we can. Even the no parking signs sometimes don't work. We put them on Brandymead. And we had like eight cars parked on Brandymead. And they were all walked down to, um, they all walked down to Shelburne. So the officer, you know, took pictures of everything and had them all towed. It says no parking tow zone. And so they were all towed. And then the owner of Shelburne paid for the cars to be towed back. Uh, but that was, you know.
Wow.
You know, you know.
Yeah.
These things happen.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Oh, well, thank you for that presentation.
No.
Yes.
Denise.
No, I just wanted to comment that um, I, I actually think it helps the residents that live on those streets when they shut the road down. Because if it is gridlock, they're not gonna get out anyways. And quite frankly, public safety wouldn't get to, to them. So it actually helps the residents by closing the road down, clearing it out, even if it's five, ten minutes, just moving traffic along.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't quite understand how the road shutdown worked, but your expla- explanation and yours is very helpful.
Great.
Do you feel like the residents understand, I mean, the, the ones who've lived there more than a year have experienced it at least once. So I assume that they have some appreciation of this process. I don't know if there's, I mean, aside from putting it in the paper and, you know, letting people know, it just seems.
So we, we've advertised before and say, you know, um, townwide, I think we've seen the signs townwide, uh, you know, apple picking season. You expect heavy traffic townwide.
Yeah.
Um, and especially with all the fall events coming up, you know, we, and we've done some extensive, you guys approved the First Parish Church. You were in the National Beer Festival. So we've done some extensive meetings and planning and we put that into here. We were like, okay, we're gonna put everything together and we understand what's going on in other communities around us. So uh, I hope they appreciate it. Um, I think that from, we come from, we've come to a better place now. Especially where it was, it was really bad. Like, you know, people like were waiting hours coming out of Sudbury Road and trying to get to wherever they could go. You know, we hear people say, you know, I live on, you know, Kingland, I'm taking a right, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go all the way around. Cause they couldn't, you couldn't even move.
Right.
And we're very aware and uh, of what, how far back and that officer who's at that intersection is like looking, you know, and, you know, you can't see the bridge. If, if you've got cars backed up to the bridge, then you, you can gauge it that way too.
Right.
Yeah, I will say that I think my first year I got a lot of complaints. Last year we didn't, I didn't get complaints. And I think, you know, the chief has other techniques that he can use. He's able to close roads on ways to avoid sort of the secondary neighborhoods. Um, you know, I, I don't, you've probably seen it on the news that Gillette's having all these issues that people are cutting through. So we're able to do some of that to stop and lessen the burden on those neighborhoods. But it's funny, just aside, last year, um, the chief got a call that a Boston politician wanted to come in and want them to like clear the traffic. So they could get through with their entourage. Like, yeah, good luck to you.
The president good to get rid of.
And we, like Denise was saying, we do the, um, like we do shut down a ways, like for Robert Road, that's a big one. Cause again, people will be like, oh, I'm, I gotta go over there. And they'll see it on the map, so they'll cut through. So we try to, we try to shut that down too, as best we can.
Yeah.
Um, and keep it flowing. And we've been doing this for a while now. So we know like, okay, if they're coming up Sudbury Road, you try to push them down a lot A. If they're coming from Whitman Street, you push them up Boone Road. So you keep both lanes going at the same time. But when you get up to the Boone, Boone Road entrance, the B C entrance, so you have cars coming down Boone and up Boone. So they go one, 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 one. And so that takes time. And as I've talked to Inglebord and just to the conservation and to Honey Pot about how do we widen that? What do we do with the process? How can we help you do that? And what's, that's gonna be a, a discussion for later on the fall for next year. It's like, what are the steps that we can do to get that wider? So we can put two lanes in a case a car breaks down. How do we, you know, we don't have to wait twenty minutes, thirty minutes, cause that's huge. Like if you're ever in traffic and you stop for thirty seconds and every car's behind you, that's it, you're, they're going for miles. And so we don't, we don't want that. We want them in there, we want people to have a good time, enjoy our community. You know, and, and do what they, what they came to do.
And I want to say lastly, that I think um, at least the two orchards that we've spoken about, the owners have been very uh, positive. They've been responsive. Um, they, you know, the, the recommendation of a second detail officer. It, it's been a very amicable process as compared to maybe past years, that they're doing the planning so far in advance and, and so thorough. So it's been a good process.
It's great. And can I just say, even though it's totally off the topic, but I really appreciated that you put out the call on Saturday about the smoke. Cause people were freaking out on Facebook and there was, I was seeing all these messages. And to have that came at just at the right time, it's like, you know, no one's on fire in Stowe, it's coming from Marlboro, it's under control.
That was a, uh, that, that was a, I, I can't take all the credit for that. That was definitely a fire chief phone call to me.
Well, the team, the team, public safety team.
He's like, we're getting inundated. And I said, and I called dispatch and they're like, we're getting inundated. So it was a collaborative effort.
But it was just, it was a really excellent use of our system and, and I appreciate this public safety team taking the time. That was great.
All right. Any other discussion?
No.
All right.
Oh, that's right.
I will take them.
Yeah, that's right. Um, I, uh, Madam Chair, I moved to approve the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee's updated traffic mitigation plan for the fall season. As presented at this meeting.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And that is unanimous. Thank you.
One times.
All right. Um, so next is our discussion of our, the Town Administrator's Goals and the Annual Evaluation Discussion. This is not, we are not evaluating Denise right now. I, uh, so what, um, what I'd like to do is I'm gonna give Denise the floor to kind of give us the um, ten thousand foot overview of her goals. And um, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Excuse me. Um, to sort of, you know, just give us the overview. She's done this in the packet as well, but I would like her to be able to speak to um, some of them. And then um, the performance evaluation, well, we should talk briefly about what we, um, what we think for goals for next year. Um, and then also we're going to talk about the performance valuation form that we voted on last year. And if anybody has any changes to it, um, I'm looking at you because, well, I guess all of us could have changes to it. But Inglebord was not on the board last year when we all voted it in. So, um, but yes, we could all discuss that as well. All right. Um, so Denise.
Uh, certainly. Um, do you, do you want me to go through all of the goals and, and?
I, you know what, maybe I don't have you go through them. Maybe I open it up to the board if anybody has any questions about any, any of them. I mean.
I mean, I'm happy to talk about it. I just don't know if you want me to go through them all.
I don't think, I think I want to hear what you're most proud of this year.
She's most proud.
I, I mean, there's a big one, but.
Well, I, I mean, quite frankly, well, let, let me summarize. So um, I have to count though, cause I didn't count. One, two, three, four. So the board gave me, um, is it eight? Eight formal goals.
Nine.
Nine formal goals. Um, last August for September first through August thirty-first. You can see, I did put a status as of uh, two weeks ago. Obviously, I think the highest priority of the town last year, which was actually noted in my goal, was Stowe Acres. So as you know, uh, as of today, we've signed the purchase and sales. Um, we have a retained rights agreement has been negotiated, not signed until we actually uh, close. And I am fairly confident that we will proceed with the funding that's needed to actually finalize that deal. So obviously that's huge. Um, the, we continue to meet monthly with the, this, I think, five or six of us that meet to talk about the project, master planning, the residential piece, the towns piece, the recreational piece, just to keep the discussions going. So I think that will be an ongoing goal for many years of, um, as the project progresses. Uh, Track Road was another one that was actually somewhat of a pipe dream last year. But um, we were awarded um, the federal earmark money. Uh, actually met on the twelfth with Mass DOT because for some reason the federal funds went to the state. And now the state has to decide when and if they're gonna give it to us. So I'm working with Representative Trey Hand's office on that as well. They were unaware of that. So we have a meeting with Mass DOT about Track Road and um, working with the state to be on their um, tip project for additional funding. Because it's coming through the state, there may be different requirements. So we're ironing all of that out currently, but that is ongoing. But we do, we have retained an engineer to come to work on us, the conceptual plans with us and sort of get us to the next step. So when enough funding comes through, we should be ready to go. Um, obviously the Green Advisory Committee was another goal. Um, they meet very regularly. They're a very active committee. Um, I've started meeting monthly with the three, three liaisons from the Green Advisory Committee uh, to talk about, you know, how I can help them, what initiatives they have. They ask for suggestions. They ask for technology questions. So it's just another way to help them facilitate their goals, um, which was a goal of the board. The uh, draft and present Select Board policies, um, within uh, three meetings. So the ones, I, actually I think the only one that the board has talked about was the Code of Conduct, which was drafted. Any other policies were sort of me or Dolores and HR putting them forward. So um, I've met that requirement, but um, I think the prior board was much more policy driven and wanted sort of set policies. So, um, the hosting, developing and hosting and onboarding training uh, for new members of Select Board Finance and Capital Planning. We are working on it. Um, we found some examples from other communities on handbooks that can be given out. Phoebe found a great example from another town that coordinated a town council training every fall after sort of the boards have new members on there that goes through sort of six highlighted topics of legal matters, open meeting law, code of conduct. Civility is on there. There's like six topics that town council will sort of give an overview. So I've reached out to KP Law to see if that's something they would do for us.
Sounds great.
I know they'll do like a open meeting law, but I don't know if they'll do a more broad.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So we're gonna see what we can do with them.
Can I ask a question? I don't know. Why did we just say those three committees?
I don't know. I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't remember either. I mean, cause, cause even Linda has done in the past, has done sort of onboarding trainings for, for anybody who's newly elected. I'm just thinking.
That is odd, right?
It is. It's, it's a little weird. I mean, those are, well, I don't know why we did those three. Anyway, so.
Right. I mean, we.
I mean, once you have the handbook, it's gonna be useful for everybody.
Right, cause we can't make a handbook tailored to the finance committee. It'll be more of being on a board handbook.
I wonder if it's cause there were fiscal implications for those boards, but I don't. I don't know, I don't know why. That seemed, that's, that's very strange and I don't remember that either.
Develop and implement comprehensive HR plans. To be honest, this was a Zach goal and it's fairly broad on
Yeah.
the emphasis. So as you know, we are developing HR policies.
I mean, a year ago, we had a new HR person. She hadn't started yet.
Exactly. And, and I mean, Dolores is just fantastic um, with HR. Um, so yes, we're, we've implemented a number of practices. Um, our um, recruitment, I mean, there's only so many places we can recruit. But retention has been fantastic. Obviously, we have employees coming back to work here. So um, I, I think we've hit the mark on that one. There's not much I need to say about the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. I mean, they're just running like crazy, um, doing some fantastic things here. I think uh, in speaking to Mike, they have a meeting this week and he's planning to provide an actual report of sort of their last year to the board. And just to show you um, what they have accomplished.
Okay.
I'm gonna skip the next one for a moment. And the last one was work with the library stakeholders to move the library renovation project forward. Obviously passed town meeting, it passed the ballot. Um, we're now embarking on the design and construction phase to keep the project in budget and moving forward. So we've met that one. The, the other one was work with the moderators to start the bylaw and charter review process. And while I had limited role in the moderator's decisions, uh, we have a new moderator who has formed a charter review committee. Uh, but in going back and looking at the bylaw, which is the next item on here, the general bylaw review committee falls onto this board. And then in starting to figure out how we form a committee, a number of other questions came up, given our bylaws are so broad and what scope you all would want to see. So um, it is in the process. We, we will discuss it next to just get some direction and how you want to handle that. But the moderator has started his review process. So those were the goals. There were some longer term goals um, that I did not touch upon, because some of them really are longer term. Happy to discuss any of them, um, or answer any other questions with regards to these.
I just, I remember putting these together and you really have, I don't know, you're right, a lot of these were pipe dream ones. So it's kind of tremendous, um, what's been accomplished. So kudos. Uh, anybody, any comments?
I think you're doing great.
Yeah.
Preview done.
Check. Um, yeah, I do, oh, sorry. The one thing I want to say is some of these are, as we're talking about putting together additional goals, I want to also keep in mind that some of these are, some of these are five-year goals. Like some of them are going to, it's going to be like a rotation of whatever. So I don't think we need to feel like we need to come up with nine new goals for you to feel like, um, yeah.
Ellen. No, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm actually trying to figure out, I'm looking through my old notes. It's like, why do we come up with those two committees? But I'm not finding, I'm getting distracted, so.
I'll have to watch the meeting too, cause I don't remember, but.
Well, that was when we were doing the, the sort of workshop-ish things.
It, well, it's, it started with the workshop, yes. And then we went from the workshop into the goals. And yes, so it may have been a topic at the workshop.
Okay.
As well.
So I have a question. If there are things that feel like they're kind of tracking along, they're well-established, there's, would it make sense to kind of take them off of the goal list? Like to me in a way, a goal is something that, um, I'm, I'm looking at out at some distance, rather than something that's already on my work plan.
Right. I mean, I would say yes, like Stowe Acres, Track Road, I mean, they're not really goals anymore. They're just projects in process. Right, I mean, I would say yes, like, uh, Stow Acres, Track Road, I mean, they're not really goals anymore, they're just projects in process. You know, some of the goals would be the, the attain, obtain the funding and, um, figure out how to work with Mass DOT, but, um, they're all, I mean, it's not like you don't put them on my list, I'm not gonna work on them, cause they're major projects for us, so. I, I mean, I would prefer the goals be something that is more tangible within a year. You know, whatever, you know, like, one of them, quite frankly, could be for next year, um, we've talked about Lower Village, um. Well, that's one of the longer term, and so we are actually meeting tomorrow to talk about hiring the engineer that's gonna do the study. You know, so a goal could be bringing the study forward, you know, something that's.
Literally what I have written down.
Surprise, surprise.
Oh, that's amazing.
Because, because some of them are just, I mean, they really are just
Right, right.
tasks that I have to do anyways.
I wanna, I do wanna be careful, um, and I know we talked about this last year too, is any goals that we give you, like, that we're not overloading you to, just cause we take it off of a goals list, and it goes into your work plan? That your work plan is not like a thousand, I, I just, I, I definitely want to give you things to work on, and I think, you know, Lower Village Water, getting a study done, getting some kind of a report, like, that would be tremendous. Um, and I do feel like that's doable within a year, right? Um, just a report as to what the feasibility, what the, what the feasibility is of water, and then you to start coming up with some options, maybe a list of options, like, what does a well drilling look like? What does this look like?
The engineers are gonna do that for us, that's part of the proposal.
But I mean, I think from your, um, fiscal perspective, like, what the town could actually, like, what you could put in a budget, or what you could bring to town meeting, I think I'd like to hear, speaking of myself, but I'd like to hear, I'd love to see at the end of this year, um, kind of what, like, some kind of concrete thing that we can start thinking about moving forward. I think that for so long, it's been, we can't do this, or it's gotta be whatever, it's like, okay, I just, I need like any, any kind of benchmark at the end of it, even if it's, we can't do anything, because we now have all of the data in front of us showing that we can't do anything. Um, so that's what I would love to see as a goal. Um, certainly, anyone else want to say?
I'd just like to be granular about that for a minute. Um, my understanding is there might be several, several sites in Lower Village. Um, I mean, some of them are already identified that where wells could happen, and so it feels to me like there's, there's a lot of evaluation, and so I just hope that, that the survey will encompass the whole, the whole business district or something, I mean.
Oh, uh, yeah, no, it is, and I actually, I, I, I was thinking, um, because I think we got four proposals back, and, um, quite frankly, some of them won't be done by ne- this time next year, there's about, most of them are within twelve months, but some of them are like fifteen months, because there's so many, there's so many tasks, because it's such a wide area and different properties, and, um, so. But definitely, we hope to have something awarded in the next, quite frankly, week or two.
Okay.
So, they'll start working on it.
Okay. I don't, I guess I don't mean that there needs to be like a solution in a year, I just, I think that like, working towards this, like, like actually something that we've worked towards within the year, or you've worked towards within the year. Um, anybody else have anything that they wanted to have Denise?
Well, I have, I have some that are almost, uh, to maybe not, I don't know if they're the right kind of goals, so I'll just, this is my list. Was, um, one thing is on the website, cause, and what doesn't show up in your goals is, is the amazing work you've done around communication, like, that, that transparency, there's just so much more information out there, but when I look at the website, I'm still like, oh, okay, you know? So, and I, I, it's not a big goal, but I guess it's, you know, this is sort of trying to say, what are the priorities that we want you to, sort of new things we want you to focus on, and I would love to take that communication work, and I know it's been in the, but, but, you know, when do you get to it?
What do you mean about the website?
It's a little clunky.
Oh.
It's clunky, it's, it's not up to date, I mean, there's different levels of the problem, like, even if we took the same structure we have today, you know, there's committees, because they're responsible still for putting their stuff up, it's not up to date. You know, we don't, we don't put a lot of resources to keeping that information up, and so therefore, people don't look at it, and then they bug the office saying, where's this, or when's this meeting, or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, funny things, when you look at it, just aren't updated, so.
No, and I would love to, um, have that as a goal, because I just sent out to the department heads and a few other folks that are active with maintaining the website, that I think it's time we redesign the website, and just, I think every few years, it's worth changing up what it looks like, cause that will keep bringing people back, oh, it's a new look, oh, things are in a different location. And as part of that, yes, I have talked about limiting access, quite frankly, I think we did a disservice by having all the boards and committees maintain their own page, because they don't have time for that. So, we've directed a lot of it through Joyce now, but it's still, I actually just messaged her, um, for the morning, because I saw her meeting notice on the board that's on the website, so she goes down, she takes it off, she'll copy and she'll put it on there, and then she'll send an email and say in the future, send me the notice.
Right.
Because we re, I mean, we really try, so I would love for that to be on there, cause I, I think the same thing, I want traffic to go to our website, that's where people should be getting information, and we have some departments, um, that have so much information, you can find anything, and then we have some that it's just nothing.
Right. And I just, I was actually looking for, um, for, um, the, for Tom, for Jim's committee, you know, and, and I, like, the moderator actually doesn't have a page right now.
He does, which is funny, because he asked me, and I said, I created the page for him, it's under the department page.
But if you, if you lick, go to the moderator, it goes to the election page right now. It, it could just be a weird break.
Yeah, cause I, I actually said to him, the day after the election, I actually created a moderator page for the first time ever, that he has a page, but yes, I know on the town clerk, it links with moderator, and, but those are the things, like, we need to.
Just, yeah, so.
But, I mean, I'll be candid, the day after the election, I said to Joyce, go in and update all the committees, and she got pushback, cause people like, well, I like to maintain my own page, I said, no, no.
No, 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 no.
The day after the election, she can update the dates, and she can do that across the board for all boards and committees with the terms, and we want it standard. None of this, you put it, you know, first name, last name, you put last name, first name, there needs to be a standard, so yes, I think that's a great goal.
Okay.
Um, and I think that's something that we should be looking at, yeah.
I agree, I just wanna make a comment too, having, uh, once, um, done a, uh, developed a, uh, um, a shopping website for, for, uh, somebody selling products, that when you have a lot of pages and data to chase, you almost need a person to sit, just do QA, go through the pages, click things, and see if they go where they're supposed to go.
Yeah.
Um, that piece of it is really huge, and, and, you know, sort of getting lost in the tree of the, of website, trying to find out whether it's working or not.
Well, and it's funny, and Joyce will do that if she's on the page, you know, like, if she's on, I don't know, uh, the Board of Health page for something, and she sees that a link's not working, she will fix it, but it's the time to go through every page when you're not going to there for something, it's just time consuming.
Maybe it was when I was looking for charter review and it went.
Yeah, charter review, I, we, I just had her create today, cause Jim asked me to create that before they started meeting, but, no, the moderator, I, um, I did create him anyways, um, what else?
I think it's delightful to have a, a, a new look.
Yep.
And that, perhaps easier.
So, another one that, and you can tell me, this isn't appropriate, I, it was something to do with around, um, Bo's property, it's not ours, but, you know, moving that project, you know, doing what you can, what, as our town administrator, to move it forward. I don't know if that's, maybe that's not fair, I mean.
Well, if that's on your work plan, it's, I wish it.
Yes.
I, we can certainly have that on there, uh, it, it will be, it's not up to me, um, but I still actively speak with all of the parties involved, and still don't have a decision or an answer as to what's happening there, so, um, yes.
But it does, I mean, it was, you know, I mean, now it's a year ago, or whatever, when it came up, and it was like, oh my god, this is like the best thing that's happened to Stowe, so. Yes, we don't own the property, we actually have no role in the decision-making, other than what we've already done, so, but I guess it's just putting that on your list, it's like, yeah, it's, I mean, it ties to EDIC, it ties.
I was gonna say, with whatever happens, it, there is going to be a direct impact on the town. So, I think it's important to have it sort of as your, like, how does this all work out?
Yeah, no, absolutely, and, and, um, I would love a resolution or an answer, cause we get the questions all the time, is what's, what's happening.
But I also feel like we shouldn't ping you, like, ding you at the end of it, if, if nothing happens, you know?
Yeah, so, that's what, I don't know, um, I don't know what that.
I think it could just be that she's the, she keeps the open line of communication with the prop, but I, I don't know, that needs to be a goal, cause that's just what you would be doing, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think.
I hear you.
I think what, you know, what we did last year was, we took some comments at the meeting, and then you emailed me stuff, we put a master list, and then you, you decided. So what, what I would envision is, you'll email me goals, I'll compile them, then at our next meeting, you'll actually go through and pick them.
Okay.
Um, and this could be very simple to like the Green Advisory one, that just said coordinate with the Green Advisory. Could be coordinate and communicate.
Yeah.
So.
Alright.
Courtney had her head on.
No, I just had a comment on that, it seemed to me that it's probably top of mind for Denise a certain amount of the time, and doesn't need to be listed anyway.
Right?
But I think by us saying it's a goal, we're sort of prioritizing it, saying that's, you know, because this is essentially what we're doing, is saying, you know, we're your, your employer, you know, we want you to work on these things over the next year, I mean, there's a thousand things she's working on, we're not gonna list them all, but, yeah.
We say the things that are important to us.
Right.
Right, and that is, and it should be, you know, the future of that property is important.
Yeah, right.
We don't have much say in it, but, but when we do have some direction, we'll have say in it, so, I wanna be part of that conversation as much as I can, and as much as they'll let me, which right now, I mean, I talk to them, I just, still don't have an answer, but I talk to them.
Well, and I think if, if, you know, it's use of time too, it's like, you know, if, if you had to choose between two different things, and one of them is meeting with them, we'd say, yeah, go meet with them, like, that's a priority, so I guess that's where I put it in the, in the goals. I have some, but I'm like you, I'm not sure if they're appropriate or not, so one of them is the town hall, I think we need to address the town hall. I was happy to hear that there's an advise, uh, a joint boards meeting set up, so that's great, if you all agree. Um, another one is, and I don't know if this is in your purview or a board's purview, to prepare the town for drought and flooding, because last year, we were in flood conditions, this year, we're in drought conditions, and this is gonna keep happening, so, maybe it's the establishment, I mean, I don't know if it's the Green Advisory Board, or if it's the Concom, or the Board of Health, or some other committee that works in an integrated manner with those boards, because we have to make sure our culverts are in good condition, and are properly sized, and that our roads are safe. We had the Hudson Road culvert that had to be repaired, cause it was, and, um, and the same thing with drought, we, we have a lot of different aquifers in this town, a lot of different layers, and I know we have a Water Resources District under the planning, I think, but is that accurate to our, is it, you know, so I'm not sure if it's you, or if it's a new committee, or if it's a mandate to planning and conservation and Board of Health, I, so it's kind of a question, but I think this town should be preparing for the changes that it's going to see. You know, precipitation is gonna change in our area, it's supposed to come faster and more furiously, more and more intense, so that it just runs off, causing flooding, and then we get the more increasing droughts.
Right.
So, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think, I'll think about that between now and the next meeting, um, I mean, I could certainly spearhead the conversation. Uh, we do it anyways internally, with the Fire Department, the Highway Department, uh, Public Safety, the Police Department, um, you know, we're constantly looking at culverts. Um, we haven't really extended it to the Board of Health, the Concom, um, but perhaps, perhaps it could be more of a task force that's formed with a representative to just brainstorm and come up with some ideas, so I think I could certainly spearhead something like that.
Something like that. Because with the new wells that are being installed, we've got a couple, and if there's a new well down in Lower Village, and there's gonna be a new well, or a couple, uh, Stow Acres, and then, at the one on Hudson Road, the one in Stow Acres, and I think the one on Town are in these sand and gravel deposits, which can suck up water, and that's where you have the more continuity between other wells, whereas if you're potentially, until you have less continuity between the wells, and I know that all these wells have to go through DEP approval, but isn't there a, the town should be aware of where our sensitive areas are, and. You know, it even could be that we apply for a grant through the MVP program next year, or something like that, where we can do a townwide assessment, or. So that was that, and then my last one, so it's sort of a care and capacity analysis of like, what can we do, right? Okay, so, and my third one is way out there, I saw in the Green Advisory one about the no plastic bags, which I thought that was an interesting one, okay, so here's another equally interesting one, and you guys can all say, forget about it. Which is, to, you know, you know, we have the ten, these ten communities that are getting grants to do no gas connections, are you still interested in that? And that's really a Green Advisory question, perhaps, but those are, that was my list.
Okay, well, I can certainly, um, same thing, I can facilitate that with, so I meet with Arnie, Carol, and Sharon, um, monthly on Green Advisory topics, so, uh, quite frankly, the plastic bag ban has not come up again since they brought it up last year. Um, but I can ask them about that and no gas connections, um, I mean, I know they want the, they want the, um, the no fossil fuel policy to be put in place, so I assume that would be part of that conversation.
Okay, great, yeah.
But I can, again, if that's what, one of the goals the board decides on, I can facilitate that with Green Advisory.
Okay, good, great. Alright, um, so I think, uh, moving forward on that part of it, um, I would ask that anyone send additional goals to Joyce? To you directly?
You can send to me.
Okay.
I'm still.
Um, let's do it by, when's our next meeting, the thirteenth?
We have three weeks between meetings, um.
Okay, so why don't we try and aim for Labor Day? Just to get you any additional goals that we haven't talked about, does that work for everyone?
Yeah, I think by, I gotta look at the calendar, um, I think Labor Day's fine, or even like the seventh or eighth, because all I will be doing is compiling them in a master list for your agenda packet, so.
For us to discuss, I don't think.
I think as long as I have them by sort of the morning of the eighth,
Okay.
um, then they'll be in your packet for us to discuss for the thirteenth.
And you'll compile what we've talked about, obviously.
Yes, I have these, um, if there's, if you wanna elaborate, if you have notes to elaborate more on them, but, um,
Great.
After we discuss the evaluation form, when that goes out, so the plan will be to send out the form to you all tomorrow with the same deadline, and I'll put a note in there about the, sending the goals back to.
Okay. Alright, and having said that, does anyone have any changes to the evaluation form as presented in the packet?
Well, I like the form, still.
I like the, I just like, we did the form last year.
Um, I'm, I'm a little concerned about what the process is gonna be, I think, um, last year, I mean, I ended up taking, as the chair, I, I was the one compiling it, and I think it, it's not really appropriate to have the, a staff person who reports at Town and Missionary compile it.
Um. I don't see it that way, because I think we, if there were questions about it, like, the, we could see it all, I, I, for me, I don't, I see it as a, as just a way to put all the data together, and I think if any of the data points are questionable, we certainly can say, let's look at the source material of it, but, um, I don't know, that's my gut reaction on it. Um, anyone else?
I'm not gonna second guess your work, I thought it looked, covered a lot of things.
Yeah.
But, uh, on the form, so, no, no comment on the.
I mean, if there's, uh, yeah.
I didn't understand what you said, what sounded like an answer to Ellen's comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, so Ellen was saying that she didn't think it was, would be appropriate for Dolores to compile the, um, like, the forms.
Understood, and I didn't understand your response.
My response?
Yeah.
Um, I, I mean, I don't, it's not like she's gonna change the information.
Unless it's confidential. I mean, the idea behind, like, that I did it was that not, the whole committee didn't see everybody else's comments, of like, it was one person sees, that would, so that's, fundamentally, that's the process, right, that, because, and, and I think last year, I think each of us met with you individually as part of that, sort of submitting things, but, um, but the compiling is, is for the public document that gets shared with the public. I'm just, it's just, you know, you don't usually have someone who reports to that person, putting the report together.
I, I do hear what you're saying, um.
That's just, I, you know, it's nothing, I mean, Dolores is a professional, and I have no problem, I just think it's, it's not necessarily a good, um, visual conflict of interest kind of, so.
Um, I mean, I'm happy to put it together, I just, I don't know that I, I, I can put it together, that's fine, I. I I can put it together, that's fine, I.
I I don't know.
You guys have any thoughts on that?
Does anybody have any other thoughts?
Uh, I, my only concern is confidentiality.
Okay.
Um. So I guess that's my only comment.
For confidentiality for who? For the board members or for Denise?
For Denise.
May I comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have answered that. I'm not my role.
So if, I mean, quite frankly, if you're all sending them to a board member, they become public information, yeah. Um, not in the packet, but they can be requested as public information.
We did that last year. I mean, that's what always.
Have an HR director last year.
Oh, so that was.
That's why it went through.
So it, I will say, I mean, you can certainly call it the towns, it normally is the HR director who would compile the town administrator.
I don't know who Dolores was.
But HR director usually reports directly to the select board, and those could, that's what I understood, the other examples I've seen.
Um, but it be, they become public documents if someone requests them. Um, I have at any time the the option to make. The evaluations public because they're about me.
Right.
Um, but someone could request them if you're emailing them amongst yourselves.
Got it.
I'm totally happy with Dolores doing it. I didn't understand the connection. I thought she was an administrative assistant to you or something.
No, no, she's our, she's our assistant town administrator.
I take it all back.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm fine with it too.
I mean, I I, again, I'm happy to be like a second set of eyes if there's a question about.
Well, this falls within our priority.
But I feel like if it's, it's an HR task as far as, we just haven't had an HR director in the past. Um, okay, so nobody had any comments on the.
Can I ask, do you wanna keep the pandemic stuff in there?
Oh, yeah, cuz we still got.
Okay, that's fine, I just don't know if you wanted to keep the pandemic stuff.
I mean, I would say yes, cuz it's, I mean, it was different, but it was still part of our lives this past year. Maybe not next year.
Okay.
Okay, so I will have her send that out to you tomorrow.
Lethal.
Um, and then send goals, and we'll have the deadline in there.
There is a motion, should I make?
Yes, um, I will take a motion. Well, cuz we're not making any changes to it.
Right. Madam Chair, I move to approve the evaluation form for the town administrator as presented.
Second. Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, that passes unanimously. Now let's talk about the general bylaw review committee.
Can you give us a little background on that?
That's what I was going to ask her for. I was gonna say, you put a beautiful memo together, but if you could give us the bullet points, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
So the background on what? The bylaw committee or the reason I'm bringing it up?
The reason you're bringing it up is why. I would like to, but if you'd like background on the actual committee, that's fine.
You said it wasn't the last time that it was done in two thousand five. Is there a requirement to do it a certain?
So.
In the bylaws.
So our our charter requires that it be done at five-year intervals. However.
Do the math.
And we cannot find any documentation that a report was actually done in two thousand and five. I think. Quite frankly, when you look at just the table of contents that I've included and some of the comments I made, it would be a very. I guess inappropriate task, quite frankly, for a. Group of volunteers to have to have expertise in all of these areas, to be making recommendations on police regulations and private roads and cemetery law, and. So I assume that's why it never went forward, uh, at the time, and then since then. When we've had a specific issue that needs updating, it's been done on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Um, which I am fine if that's the direction, and I will make that clear to the charter review committee that there needs to be. Whether it's just, you know, Articles one, two, three, and four, or something that's a committee is looking at. But I think once we get past five, we're too focused on specialties of our government, that. You know, if you wanna have a cemetery bylaw review committee, or wetlands protection bylaw review committee, but to have one group look at everything.
Right.
So because it was a goal last year, I did wanna at least have the conversation with you that, um, it's why nothing has been done, and. It it's very specific, um, with that, it's very specific that it says, um, you have to present the year after the committee is formed. So if it was something you wanted to look at, we would form them in January and give them, you know, fifteen months to the next town meeting. Otherwise, if we could, if we formed them now, they'd have to report at the spring town meeting, and that's not fair to anybody.
No.
Uh, so it was more just to have a conversation about how you felt about the general bylaws and, um, how you wanted to handle it.
Okay, um, well, I think that we need to do something about it, given the fact that. It hasn't been done in seventeen years. Um. So that's something, um. Does anyone have any? I'm just throwing it out there.
I've got some comments.
Opening comments. Courtney?
Um, I'm just imagining, for the sake of the exercise. If we did have a committee of five volunteers who are going to review the whole thing. Um, I'm imagining that possibly what they could do is. Um, like our earlier discussion of another committee's charge, they could, they could be a body that would, um. Just do some legwork, and they could say, well, let's see, town meetings, is there anything that needs to be changed there? Should we talk to the moderator about that? Uh, you know, et cetera. So, check in with various, or is there anything that I know. Myself as a volunteer that seems haywire about the animal control laws, should we then check on? So, I mean, that. Might be a way to approach it, where you have unskilled people doing, and then. Bringing it up, and bringing it up to all the boards and committees, ourselves and yourself.
I agree with that, just my experience similar to Courtney is that there are some, there's some language. In the wetlands protection bylaw that's like, what? What? And so we do the best we can in interpreting it, and the same thing like with. The storm drain system, that depending on what it was written, is probably not consistent with NPTES per program.
Right, right.
So it would be a great idea, what you said, I concur that you have these, and USTs, you know, underground storage facilities. Those regs have probably changed so much since two thousand five, and, you know, all personnel administration, you know. So I think, I like your idea, that you have a group of people that go together and they reach out to the different boards and say. Have you had something sticking in your craw for the last seventeen years on your bylaws? Let's, you know, see what we can do about that.
Yeah, I I like that a lot, actually, um, because I do think having different committees for each one of them, that's just unwieldy. And also finding the volunteers that are going to want to be on all the different committees. Um, but I do think if you have five people, or whatever the number is. Um, and then they fall under the select board, and again, just like we were talking about with the EDIC, and what you said is. Then they sort of have the ability to to reach out to the different, you know, boards and and whatever, so. I think that is a fantastic way to proceed with that.
So I can present a draft charge.
Yep.
Following the charter language, that it's five voters and what they need to do, but. Maybe we tweak it a little bit to say work with the boards and committees, departments, boards and committees. To. Gather. And.
Just gather input.
I think it's gonna be gathering input.
And then maybe presenting draft changes.
Well, that.
That's gonna be huge.
That's huge.
Yeah.
But, so identifying the issues.
Right.
And then it becomes, the recommendation is that. Each, I don't, I'm thinking out loud, that each committee does its, cuz they're they're closest to it.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure that Chief Salisi, I only say it that way because I feel confident saying his name now. Um, he probably has some input on the Lake Boone.
Right.
Stuff.
Right.
Right, and so anyway, I think. Yeah, I, bingo, I like it.
Yep.
I think, I think also that that, the fifteen months is because you have. The the group that's going to pay attention to this, and then all of the other, everybody else is busy doing their regular stuff all the time. And so they're gonna say, could you please respond to me within, you know, so the initial response and then.
And then you're tracking everybody.
Yeah, so that's.
Okay, yeah. So I'll put a draft together of the committee charge, and then we have obviously a couple months before we have to, before we can actually. Appoint them, cuz we can't appoint until January. Um, but we'll get that going, and then we'll get that committee underway.
To get people to.
It will take a while.
So that's it, exactly, if you can't get volunteers, and that's happening to many of our boards. One of the bylaw questions, I don't even know if this is legal, but this is what I was thinking in my mind, is. Can you have a staff person who lives in Stowe volunteer on a committee, if they're not on a committee? You know what I'm saying? So like, for example, well.
Yeah, so this, this actually just calls for five voters, so if there's still, if there is voter in Stowe and the board wants to put an employee on a committee.
Yeah.
There's no, some of them say you can't serve, like finance committee, you can't serve on other committees and be on the finance committee. Um, so that would be up to the board, um, when we have applicants to say, yes, I'd support an employee on there, no, I wouldn't.
Okay.
But, okay, so that's perfect, we'll get that underway.
Excellent, uh, I think.
They have a year?
So they have to present the report to the, to town meeting the year following when they were appointed. So they'll have a full year and a few months.
Um, do we wanna take a motion to have you do that, or do we need to just do it the next time that we actually?
Okay, I don't need a motion on that. Well, I'll just provide a draft, um, at some point of the committee language.
Alright, um, meeting minutes, then, let's, let's move on. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Go Joyce, go Joyce, go Joyce.
I love looking through this, cuz I'm always like, oh.
Is that what I?
I remember exactly how that went.
This is great.
I know, it was very good.
Fantastic.
So no comment.
Alright.
Oh, so, um, I, uh, I'm going to accept the meeting minutes of August ninth to two thousand twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright, that is unanimous. Alright, um, do we have, okay, so. I know there were questions about correspondence.
Yes.
However, what I realized is that I need to actually put that on an agenda to have a discussion about, so. Um, about the amount.
About the school committee?
Oh.
No, I think we we had two different things. So one of them is, we had discussed, I believe. I don't even remember, cuz I went back through the minutes and couldn't find them, but, um, the amount of. There was a question a couple years back about the amount of correspondence that we were getting, and it was sort of like. Let's just not see every single thing that comes into the select board office, cuz some of it is just not stuff that. Necessarily pertains to us. I don't know if this happened when you were on the board the last time. Did you often have?
It was the folder.
Like newsletters are photocopied and.
Like Verizon stuff or whatever, like sort of stuff that you looked at.
No, we got it in the green packet.
Right, so I think I would like to, um, put on a a future agenda, sort of. Um, just to re-discuss kind of what we get, and what we see, and what we don't need to see, and whatever, now that we have that.
Yeah, can you just make a quick comment?
Yeah.
So my recollection is that at some point, we started getting electronic.
Mm-hmm.
Correspondence, that we got, uh. Things that were timely, um, that had come, you know, but then. Sort of like the newslettery things, or or maybe even, you know, the the notice from. Um, Verizon or Comcast saying they're dropping one of the channels, or something, which, I know, it's important. Um, just not to me. Um, that those things were in the office, and so like there was.
So like if we wanted to go look at them.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we used to have to go to, come to the office to read the whole thing.
Okay.
The everything.
Right, right, right.
And, or those of us that don't read fast would have to come in early.
Okay, um, alright, so we can, why don't we just, I'm gonna put that on the next agenda so we can have a more substantive discussion about it. Um, did anybody have?
And then the other was?
Yes, you had a question about.
The school committee, which, um, cuz we got the letter that that Steve Rubenstein's had to step down, and.
Yep.
I thought it was just the school committee would appoint a, uh. Relates with until the next election, but.
No, Mass General Law requires it to be a joint board appointment.
Yeah.
Um, and Linda has determined that the joint board for the school committee is the remaining Stowe representatives. Um, so we are legally required under our charter to post it.
Yeah.
The vacancy's been posted, um, I've reached out, although I didn't, did not hear back, um, to Leah. Um, that the expectation would be at the September thirteenth meeting, if there are applicants, we would have a joint vote on school committee member. Um, it's through September sixth is the posting.
And this is, is it just, I mean, I don't, actually, I don't, Steve seems like, didn't he?
It's the nine months, it's a nine month, it's just nine months.
It's just until the election, yes.
It's a short.
Is the rest of his term, or is it just until?
It's the rest of his term, which, which happens to be the next election as well, yeah, it was his, he's, yeah, so it's just nine months.
Yeah, and and actually the process in our, let me think if it's our charter, I don't know, it's that we have a charter, we have the school committee. Um, handbook, and then Mass General Law, but we couldn't take his resignation, the notice has to come from the school committee that he resigned. So his resignation alone couldn't trigger the process.
Right.
So we got notice from Leah that he formally resigned, and Phoebe could post the vacancy, and we don't normally post elected positions. So we had to tweak the posting based on their handbook and what the duties are, so that's all done.
So it was more complicated, so, okay.
Yeah, so we're expecting it on the thirteenth.
Right.
As long as Leah and her group can make it, I have not heard back.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing about correspondence is that, um, we had a a thing in there about declaring. October childhood cancer month. So we're gonna put that on the next agenda as well, just because I think there, there is, um, wording. For a proclamation in there, so I do, I just, we're gonna put it on the next agenda to discuss and see, and vote for.
Was that a resident that that asked for?
I don't think, I, I'm not sure, because as I went through it, there are many towns around us that have done. The same or similar proclamations, and so, um.
So I don't think it's a resident, it looks like it's from the.
If I was wondering if, and some of those names might have been someone that.
It's the Woo Bird Middlesex Lions Club that is spearheading this.
So, um, but yeah, certainly we'll put it on the next agenda and have a chat about it. Alright, anything else?
Um, just a question on the MPO.
Yep.
Is that, are we members of that? I mean, are, is anyone interested in nominating themselves? It would have to be Megan or you, I think.
I thought you put Ellen, did Ellen, were you back in the MPO?
I'm looking through, um.
Were you Magic?
I, um.
I'm Magic this time.
I thought you were, because it was, it was Jesse.
Jesse was the primary and I'm, I was the, cuz.
Yes, and and they had reached out to see if I would be the, um. Secondary, but I think the board discussed it, and I think, I thought it was you, Ellen.
I think, I think it is, I'm just looking.
Because you were the chair at that time.
Uh, no, it's just when we still had appointment, we still assigned things, Zach and I all.
Because it says nominees have to be either the chair.
Oh, what if, oh, MPO.
Uh, it says nominees for elected shall be the chief executive officer of the municipality in the case of towns. It's the chair of the select board. But I I guess the question is, are we interested in nominating, being involved in this?
Me?
Ya huh.
Well, and I will, I, I'll tell them that. Participated in the MPO, we did MAPC and Magic, we didn't actually do MPO.
The question is, it, what it is, it reviews tip money that goes through, so are we really involved in a lot of big mass DOT projects?
And we have, I mean. It's like, not like we have. We get ignored when it, even with MAPC, we get ignored, so I would.
Maybe that's because we don't have any. Face time.
So we're still invited to their meetings, this is just the, um.
Okay.
This is for the for the board.
This is the executive committee, which, they technically are the ones that vote. Um, but we are still invited to participate in the process.
Okay, fine.
So if you'd like to nominate Megan, that she'd go on the full ballot, I mean, it's not, it still has to go to all the sub-regions to vote.
So I don't know, it's, it's, it's more a question than a request, how's that? If we haven't been involved and we don't have a lot of big. Roadway type projects or needs, then.
I would say for the election level, it's not more the time, I think we could have a conversation down the road about, you know, our participation in either MAPC. Or Magic or both, because.
Great, okay, and then my second thing on here.
There was a lot of correspondence.
There's a lot.
There was a lot of correspondence.
This keeps going so, oh, yes, so the two letters from GZA. One identifies White Pond is having PFAS issues, the language with respect to. Lake Boone is neutral. So does anybody know where the Lake Boone has PFAS in it? Lake Boone is neutral. So does anybody know where the Lake Boone has PFAS in it?
Yeah.
I guess we need to look at the whole report.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
So, so I haven't, um, I actually, I I haven't fully read the GZA stuff since I've been back. But uh when I last met with the fire marshal regarding the PFAS at the fire academy, it appeared that it was stretching to Lake Boone. Um, we're very close. So I think they had some concerns that it was in the outer edges of Lake Boone. But I haven't seen an an updated report since then.
All right, so should this be on the agenda for next time or?
If I can ask, not to make it the next meeting cuz we have a fairly full agenda already. Um, so we can put it on the following agenda if you'd like and I can get some information on that.
That would be great.
Right. I just think we need to know what this report says, cuz they did it on the, on behalf of DCAM, right?
Yeah.
Yes, because DCAM is taking over because there are so many um state subsidies that have PFAS issues. Um, DCAM is is spearheading them. Um, so it is the Department of Fire Service, but DCAM is doing their, um.
Doing the work, which makes sense. Um, I, and the reason I'm concerned, of course, is all the wells and the water quality and the public health.
Yes, so.
This could be a meeting with Board of Health too, or they.
Well, so this has been ongoing. This is nothing new. Um, so Department of Fire Services is doing what we're doing to our PFAS contamination.
Okay.
They're providing bottled water. They have the uh wells being tested for the circles of that GZA has identified.
Okay.
Um, they are just required to provide um updates. So they submitted their um immediate response plan. It has to go through the state. We have to get a copy of it. Um, but no, this is, um, this has been ongoing. Uh, there's also um contamination at the mill um with another engineering company is dealing with it because that's the responsibility of the former mill owners. They're doing the same thing. There's bottled water, um, there's well testing. Um, so we have these three different areas in town that are being handled by three different engineering firms. One of them is ours. Um, and they're all doing the same thing. It's required, quite frankly, by statute. But I just haven't seen, um, the last report I saw showed sort of the uh the contamination areas and it did stretch and they had the number of houses um that were getting bottled water and were being tested. But I haven't seen an update since I met with him, which is now it's probably been well over a year, so.
Okay, so, I'm sorry to belabor this, so this is a Board of Health issue really, right? I mean, it's.
It's a DEP issue cuz it's not our contamination. It's not, so it's PFAS is overseen by DEP primarily.
But if our. So, but if, if our town has three locations where wells are compromised, you know, this gets into the whole planning for our water resources. So maybe it should be on the agenda for that reason? Or am I just stepping
I.
out of, to me, this is like a a required, we have to prepare. It is what I'm, in my, my response is, oh, really? Huh, what are we doing about that? So I don't know whose purview that is.
So I think, I think we should have it on the agenda to talk about because we have nothing to do with this, quite frankly. With, we can talk about any response, but even when calls come into the Board of Health, when it's related to these other issues, it's really DEP that's regulating everything. So they're copied on communication, so they know what's happening, um, but it really doesn't fall under us. So I don't even know how we would plan for it because we are not involved in the remediation, we're not involved in the.
I guess the question is, is remediation an option?
Yes, but not by us.
Okay, so it's not like we'd have to think about a public water supply down the line?
No, no.
Okay.
Quite frankly, if, if they determine that the Department of Fire Services needs a, well, they should have one with the Department of Fire Services. But if they decide that their contamination can't be resolved and they need to put one in, that's the responsibility of the state.
Okay.
So for our PFAS issue, we are doing individual POAT systems on the individual homes to remediate it. Um, because for us, putting in a public water supply townwide or locally is just not feasible. Um, and so it's the same with the other two. Um.
Okay, well, then I defer to you whether it's something we need to discuss.
I, I, I will say, as far as having been on the board for the last few years, PFAS has been something that has been discussed over and over and over again. And Denise has always been really good about getting us.
Okay, so do residents understand their rights and everything and?
Information. Um, yeah, I mean, the ones who I think are, like, so we, full disclosure, like, we've been getting bottled water for the last two years because of where our location is. They detected PFAS in our well years ago at this point. Um, so I do think that the town's done a really good job with letting people know who have the issues.
But I, I'll let it drift.
But I don't, I could.
No, I, I think it's a good agenda topic um for the second meeting in September, so I can update you on. So yes, uh Megan is correct. Our um LSP and engineering firm is great with communication with our contamination. The Department of Fire Services, I've heard their communication is really good. I've heard complaints about the Gleeson Dale um engineering firm, but I've called them, I've called the state, it's the state. So there are requirements and and the state has actually stepped in more so with the Gleeson Dale contamination. But again, it's been a while since I've gotten an update on those two, so I can just get an update on the three sort of larger contaminations and just provide an update as to where they all stand. Um, but we are, we, the town, are only responsible for our specific contamination, which has been determined to be the former fire station site. The other two, communication is dealt with through private engineering firms and DEP.
All right, that sounds, thank you.
All right. Any other comments on correspondence? Ooh, I will take that final motion then.
Motion to adjourn.
Second up.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. All right.
Okay, so I missed the day.